This conference will now be recorded.
So this is the rest of the people assigned over the chairs and chambers. I didn't know that about all of them. And Batman also signed up here.
So it's just these two?
Please, the four are not on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Delete it there. Or so.
It's a long two minutes. Just under the wire. I am seven o'clock. Let's call this meeting to order. If everyone could please stand as the American Legion Captain Font Post 32 presents the colors and leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Detail. Hold. Post colors.
I pledge allegiance.
Present, for taking a lie. Arm. I pledge allegiance to the law. The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and an action. Forward, arm. Now face. Forward, foot.
Please be seated. While the recorder, please call the roll. Counselor Irvin.
Here.
Counselor Fleck.
Here.
Youth representative.
Here.
Counselor Meridet.
Here.
Counselor Roberts.
Here.
Counselor Savage.
Here.
Counselor Sennett.
Here.
Mayor Solzey.
Here.
Takes us to item three, Oaths of Office. So we'll start with Candace and I'll have you join me. Please raise your right hand and move the after me. I, Candace Solzey. I, Candace Solzey. Do solemnly affirm. Do solemnly affirm. That I will execute the duties of mayor. That I will execute the duties of mayor of the City of Cottage Grove. The City of Cottage Grove, a municipal corporation. A municipal corporation. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. And will uphold and defend. Will uphold and defend the Constitution and laws. The Constitution and laws of the United States of America. Of the United States of America. The state of Oregon. The state of Oregon. And the City of Cottage Grove. And the City of Cottage Grove. And will honestly and faithfully. Will honestly and faithfully perform the duties of my office. Perform the duties of my office. Congratulations. Thank you. Is that a photo opportunity? I think I did. Oops. We'll do one more station later. All right. Please raise your right hand and move the after me. I, Mike Flack. I do solemnly affirm. Do solemnly affirm. That I will execute the duties of city councilor. That I will execute the duties of city councilor. Of the City of Cottage Grove. The City of Cottage Grove. A municipal corporation. Municipal corporation. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. And will uphold and defend. And will uphold and defend. The Constitution and laws. The Constitution and laws. Of the United States of America. Of the United States of America. The state of Oregon. The state of Oregon. And the City of Cottage Grove. And the City of Cottage Grove. And will honestly and faithfully. And will honestly and faithfully. Perform the duties of my office. Perform the duties of my office. And Michelle Savage. Please raise your right hand and move the after me. I, Michelle Savage. I, Michelle Savage. Do solemnly affirm. Do solemnly affirm. That I will execute the duties of city councilor. That I will execute the duties of city councilor. Of the City of Cottage Grove. The City of Cottage Grove. A municipal corporation. A municipal corporation. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. And will uphold and defend. And will uphold and defend. The Constitution and laws. The Constitution and laws. Of the United States of America. Of the United States of America. The state of Oregon. The state of Oregon. And the City of Cottage Grove. And the City of Cottage Grove. And will honestly and faithfully. And will honestly and faithfully. Perform the duties of my office. Perform the duties of my office. Dana Mary. Please raise your right hand and move the after me. I, Dana Mary.
I, Dana Mary.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will execute the duties of city councilor.
That I will execute the duties of city councilor.
Of the City of Cottage Grove.
Of the City of Cottage Grove.
A municipal corporation.
A municipal corporation.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And will uphold and defend.
And will uphold and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The state of Oregon.
The state of Oregon.
And the City of Cottage Grove.
And the City of Cottage Grove.
And will honestly and faithfully.
And will honestly and faithfully.
Perform the duties of my office.
Perform the duties of my office.
I'm gonna do the photos of everybody.
Oh, yes. Now, the newspaper would like a picture of the whole.
The whole.
Thank you, guys. Before I move on to the State of the City address, I would like to acknowledge a citizen's remarks from our last meeting on the 12th. He said that there are two reasons why someone would run to be an elected official. Number one was, while I believe there's more than two, but I'm just gonna tell you what his opinion is, and it's number one was for personal gain. Number two was because you just want to help. And I can tell you that my reason is definitely number two. I want to serve the citizens of Cottage Grove, and I promise never to use this position as any form of currency or personal gain in any way. It was a tough decision to run, just because it opens you up to a lot of criticism and it's a difficult position to hold at times. And I'm going to ask you for a little grace as I get my feet under me. And I've been a counselor for four years now, but running meetings is a whole nother animal, and I'm hopeful that I will do a really good job right out of the gate, but there's a really good chance I won't, and so I'm hoping for a little grace. It's a huge time commitment, and that I know, and so I would like to thank my husband for taking this commitment on with me, because I'm sure there's going to be some family sacrifice, and I'm grateful. When I look back at past adventures and projects and jobs that I've worked on, the ones that have been the most difficult have been the ones that I remember with the most positivity. I'm both honored and humbled to have been elected as the new mayor of Cottage Grove. In the face of my upcoming duty, I feel privileged and grateful for the trust that you have put in me. In the next two years, I will strive in every way to be worthy of your confidence. I promise to hold this position representing the citizens of Cottage Grove with honesty and integrity. It is my goal to bring city leadership and citizens together. Your ideas, your suggestions, your voice is important. The belief that every person has something to offer in a community is at the core of what makes Cottage Grove a twice recipient of the All-American City Award so special. I am aware that our city leadership is built on pledges of trust and the absolute knowledge that the power that the council has is delegated to it by the citizens of Cottage Grove. As I reflected on 2022, for this year's State of the City address, one of Cottage Grove's successes stood out. I'm going to start with that one. The City of Cottage Grove was awarded $5 million for the downtown refinement plan by the Department of Commerce for Economic Development Administration, the EDA. It was the second largest award in the nation for 2022. The grant was prepared by Lain Council of Government staff working closely with our city staff. The city will match with a $1,250,000 for a total project funding of $6,250,000. The award was made on August 30th, 2022, and the grant is for new sidewalks, paving, lighting, fiber optic, water, sewer lines, landscaping, and furnishings from 8th Street West to the Main Street Bridge. The project will extend down 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th Streets approximately 50 feet north and south of Main Street. Construction is planned to start late 2023 with the completion expected by the end of 2024. On September 22nd, 2022, the EDA announced a $97,807 grant for the Bohemia Park Entry Plaza project. On September 15th, 2022, the Oregon State Parks and Recreation Department announced approval of $346,500 grant to the City of Cottage Grove for the Bohemia Park Entry Plaza splash pad. An additional $231,000 match from the Bohemia Foundation and city will go to the project for a total of $1,675,307. The funding is to build the Bohemia Park Entry Plaza, which includes a steel historic replica water tower for an interactive water feature, including three water splash areas, a concrete railroad walk path, six historical interpreted pillars, six art stations, 1,700 feet of concrete walk paths, benches, swing set, and landscaping, including utilities and irrigation. Lund Development, Christina Lund and staff, prepared both Bohemia Park grant applications for the Bohemia Park project. The city council has approved having the city manage the grant for Bohemia Foundation. Construction is expected to start in summer of 2023 and be completed by the winter of 2023 or early 2024. If you combine the grant awards for downtown and Bohemia Park, it is the largest award to any single community in the United States for 2022. It's quite an achievement. It is believed that part of the reason for Cottage Grove's success attaining these grants was through the teamwork of many individuals and supportive organizations. Both grants received statements of support from the CG Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Cottage Grove EBID, Cottage Grove Community Foundation, and numerous local businesses. The Oregon Department of Transportation is making some significant improvements in our community. The Highway 99 Urban Upgrade Project will bring about $6,300,000 of improvements to Highway 99 between the bridge over Coast Fork Millamette South to the Woodson Bridge. The improvements will change the roadway to one lane each direction with a center turn lane, build new sidewalks and bike lanes to current ADA standards, install a new rectangular rapid flashing beacon and pedestrian crossing sign between North Chamberlain and Gear Avenue, replace the traffic signal at Woodson Place intersection, install new enhanced existing streetlights, and the project completion time is estimated to be July of 2023. The second ODOT project is refurbishment of the bridge on the Cottage Grove Connector. The ODOT Connector project is scheduled to start on January 2023. The project will rehabilitate the connector embankments and bridge. It will also include a new pedestrian sidewalk on both sides of the connector. The estimated project cost is $3,250,381.86, and the estimated completion time is August 31st, 2023. In 2021-22, the City of Cottage Grove spent $82,693.91 for further processing of our water reclamation facilities biosolids by shipping the solids to a farm in Sutherland. In December of 2022, the city received a 25% increase effective December 15th, 2022 for biosolid processing. The estimated 2022-23 cost is $90,000. The increase is due to labor and fuel costs. City council will be considering a proposal from West Yoss, City Engineer of Record for the Water and Wastewater Treatment Plants, to complete 30% design for a biosolids dryer for the treatment facility. The goal is to save the city funds by processing it ourselves. Additional savings will come from reductions in chemical and electricity used currently at the facility. An estimated treatment plant cost savings would be more than $125,000 per year. Additional savings will come from reducing the purchase of fertilizers at the golf course and the city parks. The dried biosolids will be used to replace most fertilizer expenses. The Snap House is getting a new pavilion graciously donated by Warehouser. City staff have started preparations to remove the donated log picnic shelter from Warehouser property and transport it to its new home at Prospector Park. A permit has been applied to build the structure. Staff will have the structure disassembled by the end of February 2023 and plans to have it rebuilt by the end of summer 2023. As a result of the partnership between the city and South Lane School District to develop a warm water therapy pool as part of the Warren H. Doherty Aquatic Center, our community has attracted the attention of Tamaraq Foundation Board of Directors. Members of Tamaraq Foundation visited the aquatic center and discussed the future for the facility with Joshua Norton, the pool manager. In December, board members from Tamaraq Foundation presented a grant for $50,000 for additional improvements to the warm water therapy pool. The grant will fund the addition of an access ramp and decking. On December 12th, city council approved the purchase of body cameras and new tasers for the police department. The city manager and the interim chief, Groth, applied for and was awarded a grant from City County Insurance for $15,000. This grant will pay for 40% of this year's overall cost. The cameras have been ordered and should arrive by February. Some training has already begun on policies and procedures for the use of the new body cameras and tasers. The city estimates the new equipment will be in use by the officers in the community by the end of March. The police department is currently recruiting for new and lateral officers. Applications are coming in and interviews will be starting shortly. The recruitment has already begun for the captain's position. Applicants have received and interviews will be starting soon. The goal is to have the new captain in the position by February 2023. Captain Nelson will be returning to Eugene Police Department in February. We are appreciative of Eugene Police Department and their willingness to assist our department at no cost. The Lain County Sheriff's Department has also been a great help through our transition. The police chief recruitment has unofficially begun with personal contact to possible candidates and other experienced individuals around the state. The official recruitment will begin in May after the 2023-24 budget is approved. The new police chief should be on staff by August. With all our successes in 2022, we have not been without our challenges. We have seen our communities stressed with homelessness, division, and an economic downturn. However, 2023 is a new year. Let us try to bridge the gaps, be honest with each other, even if it's difficult. Let's say goodbye to what is not working and embrace what is. I want to acknowledge the fact that we've had a great influx of attendance to our council meetings in the last year. Citizens have been sharing concerns with many passionate speeches given from the podium in 2022. Thank you for showing up, for getting involved, and for caring about your community, our home. Now, one of the best parts about this job is that we get to acknowledge people in our community that go over and beyond, and tonight I get to give two certificates of appreciation. The first one is typically given to a citizen, but this year there are two citizens that I feel are highly worthy of this award. I'm going to announce who they are, but before they come up, I would like to express why I believe they are so deserving of this award. The Mayor Royal Certificate of Appreciation is presented this year to Peter and Michelle Rose. They are small business owners. They own the Crafty Mercantile Downtown. Peter is the curator of Opal Theater, and Michelle is the executive director. They are heavily involved in the Trashin' Show, Earth Day in April, summer art camps K through 12. Michelle is a board member for Downtown Cottage Grove. She's the art walk coordinator, and you'll often see Peter out there blowing leaves off the sidewalks in his free time. They care about their community deeply, and it shows. In recognition and appreciation for countless volunteer hours, thank you for furthering cultural arts, beautification, and dedication to your community. Peter and Michelle. Peter and Michelle. The next Mayor Royal Certificate of Appreciation is given to a business. And I'm going to do the same thing. I'm going to tell you the business and then before the person comes up, I'm going to tell you why I think they are so deserving. This year, we are presenting the Mayor Royal Certificate of Appreciation to KNND Radio. KNND hosted and enhanced many community events over the years, some of which are Rock Roll and Rumble, Concerts in the Park, Bohemia Mining Days. They continually keep the citizens informed with talk radio, Beeper Show, hosting state representatives, politicians, county commissioners, our local police and fire, local mayors, counselors, our city manager. And Cameron also heads up the Legislative Committee for the Chamber of Commerce to assist in legislative and judicial changes to keep the public informed. In recognition and appreciation for your support of the community through knowledge, education, entertainment, and countless volunteer hours. Cameron Reinen.
Congratulations, Cameron.
Items to be added to the agenda? I see none. Appearance of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a time for citizens' comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed up to five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for a public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to council discussion on that item. The council will not engage in any discussion or make any decision based on public comment at this time. However, the council may take comments under advisement for discussion and action at a future council meeting. Dennis Procu.
My name is Dennis, D-E-N-N-I-S, Procu, P-R-O-C-I-W. I live at 127 Tyson Drive, in Middlefield Village here in Cottage Grove. I'm here as a resident, but I'm also here as a board member for our HOA Association. I'm the second vice president and treasurer. I have a couple of, I don't know if it'd be appropriate to hand these out. It's the trespass letter. By, by looking at those, I think it'll make it more clear what I'm after. I'm here not to complain about anything, and that might be a little bit unusual. What I'm here for is we'd like to have clarification of this trespass letter of consent. Now, I wasn't, I've been in Middlefield probably seven and a half, almost eight years now, and I've never seen this notice that has been on our board, and many of our residents didn't know it was there either. The last 10 days, we've had two break-ins of homes, and we've had one trespass. And the police have been very good. I have nothing to say but good things about our police. We're very supportive of you and our police. But I'd like to have a clarification of this letter and how does it impact our 94 homes in Middlefield? And how does it impact our common areas? Which is, is a nonprofit, but it's also a business. So we'd like to know how that, those highlighted areas impact those two things. And I guess I'm going to ask, doesn't ever hurt to ask. I personally, and I, and I'm great, many of our residents would like to have a representative, because we don't expect you to talk about this tonight. I'm just bringing this up. But we would like to have a representative at our, our Wednesday board meeting at four o'clock, if possible, to maybe address some of these items. Because of the break-ins and the trespass, we would like to have a person, maybe even talk about preventative measures, maybe some products they can use to help defend their home, et cetera. And then maybe even talk about, which is confusing to many of our elderly over there, which we are, we're all above 65 for the most part, courtesy checks by the police, calls of suspicious persons, and calls of suspicious activity. How does, how do those folks in our community accurately address those things when they call the police department? And what's appropriate? And that's what I have tonight. And I hopefully that we can find somebody that will come and address some of those things for us.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Mayor and new members. And thank you, council.
Mike Bork.
My name is Mike Bork, or Michael Bork, I live at 310 North Douglas Street here in Cottage Grove. I'm an expressive concern that I have. I lived in Oregon probably for 35 years. Lived, went to school here, School of Oregon State, moved out and came back. Was living in Eugene for three or four years, and then I moved here. Reason why I moved from Eugene was the homeless, the lack of respect for the police and the, just, you know, just the public parks and everything that went to heck over there. I moved here thinking I was getting away from it. It is now to the point where it's about the same as Eugene. If you guys are very familiar with North Douglas, you're basically surrounded by two homeless camps. And never in my life, but I believe that in a residential area that the town would put homeless camps next to residents. And that's where my biggest concern is. I think, I mean, we've all been in desperate situations, myself included, where, you know, we had to live out of a car, something like that. But right now, it's gotten to the point where if you look out there, if you go to Eugene, Salem, Portland, this town is not that size. It can't support what we're trying to support now. I'm all for a path for people to get better. I used to run an employment agency out of Eugene Springfield, helped a lot of people that, you know, came out of prison or wanted to help themselves. There's a lot of people that don't want help. And that's where the biggest issue comes. And, you know, my biggest concern is with these camps that we have now. We talked about gray water. We've talked about oil and gas village. We may not allow them to run in propane. I'm just waiting for one of them to explode like they've done in Eugene. So I just want to bring that up. This is a concern. It starts from the top down, and we need to take a look at what's really important. I know the homeless situation's not going to go away. It's going to get worse. Our economy is going to start slowing down. You can tell just by the number of warehouser, you know, trains that go by. I worked in the construction industry. We were running 50 houses a month. Now we're down to about four. So these are big builders I've dealt with. So it is slowing down. It's going to happen. And so we need to be prepared for that because I'm all for helping people that live here. They're going to go through hard times. I mean, a lot of the COVID spending and all that for the rents and all that are going to go bye-bye. And more people are going to be out there. So we really need to look at how we can help the people that want to be helped and the people that don't. We put them to, you know, the cities that can't support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Mason.
My name is Dennis Mason, and I live in the Old City Hall Building here in Cottage Grove. We, first of all, welcome to the council and welcome to the new mayor. Glad to see a fresh start and a fresh year here. I think that we have an opportunity through unity. I'd like to say a prayer in Cherokee. And that means Creator, I am ready for you to be helping me. I'm going to share with you a poem called, "I'm the Indian in Your Living Room." I would like to introduce someone to you that you have grown up with and refuse to acknowledge, who has made the life you now have possible. Hello, my relatives. I am the Indian in your living room. I am the First Nations, the original inhabitants of Turtle Island. I am the corn, the beans, the squash, the sweet potatoes, and the tomatoes on your dinner total. I am the gratitude you express every Fourth of Thursday in November. I am the corn maiden, the two hills, the sacred mountains, the spider woman, shiprock. I am the kachinas, the thunderbird, the black hills, and the buffalo. I am the piped area, the keeper of the sacred bendals, the white buffalo calf, crocodile. I am hayoka, coyote, waven, crow, white old man, and salmon boy. I am the sundance, the ghost dance, the Inuit rockon, and the angotaya. I am the Indian in your living room. I am the great law of peace, and I am the plan for the U.S. Constitution given you by the Klan Mothers of the Iroquois Federation. I am political freedom, free speech, equality, and freedom of assembly, which you claim is part of being an American. I am the Delaware who allowed Washington's troops to survive the winter at Valley Forge. I am the caretaker of Mother Earth, and I am the grandfathers who tell the stories that teach us how to be human. I am the ancestors who watch from the heavens. I am Poetan, Pocahontas, Sacagawea, all who helped the white men survive in a strange land. I am the brotherhood of the shield that used to care for the, and protect the people before the white men came. I am the Indian in your living room. I am the residue of manifest destiny, and I am an inconvenience to progress. I am America's final solution. I am also the ghost of Osceola Pontiac in Seattle. I am the trail of tears which my ancestors walked. Sand Creek and Wounded Knee, one and two. I am Baker's massacre, Ghost Ridge, and all the atrocities carried out in your name. And I am the guilt you carry for these crimes. For I am the Indian in your living room. I am blankets infected with smallpox. I am chowed whiskey, forced conversions in Indian schools. I am slavery, spurred beef rations, and crooked Indian agents. Cornstalk, Chief Joseph, Geronimo, and Crazy Horse. I am Sitting Bull, Jim Thorpe, Leonard Peltier, and Ira Hayes. And I am Squanto, Red Cloud, White Calf, and Sue Ann and Big Crow. I am the Knobber Coe, Coe Talkers, who helped you win the war in the Pacific. And I am a long history of unpaid debts and broken promises. I am the spirit of the buffalo shot from train windows and left a rat on the plains. And I am every trudy ever made and broken. I am the Indian in your living room. And I am the reservation where the Constitution and the Book of Rights do not apply. I am the loss of freedom and way of life, and I am poverty and unemployment, alcoholism, and diabetes. I am hopelessness and suicide, and I am here to tell you that the reservation now includes your living room, and it just swallowed New Orleans a couple decades back. And now we all live here together, so welcome to the reservation. What they have done to me is being done to you, and you left them away with it. For I am the Indian in your living room, and I will not go away. I am your past, your future, your destiny, and your heritage. And I am that small drop of Indian blood that every American family now carries. I am your parent, your grandparent, and great-grandparent, and we are all related. I am the Indian in your living room, and I don't seek vengeance. I ask that the people open their hearts and listen. And when you weep for the loss of my children as you would weep for the loss of your own, then I will know you have heard. And for those who would say something about the homeless and the influx of homeless into this community, one of your local homeless people, born and bred here, 49 years, upstanding citizen, is doing well in intensive care with the frostbite that he got during the last bed-suffusing nights not opening during the ice storm that he got in that political camp, which is not a concentration camp, but it is a refugee camp. And the environment is poverty, shame, division, and people being used as political pawns. He's in ICU right now. And what I need you to know is that it is important that we get along, that we have a fresh start, and that we are allowed to continue doing good work for good people because that is the heart of who this community is. It's time to set political beliefs aside and start saving people's lives. They're dying, and it's not acceptable to use them as political pawns. I am the Indian in your living room. I will not go away. This country was mine first, and I don't tell you to go away.
Thank you. Alexandra Call. So now we are going to the Zoom for Bruce Kelch.
Bruce Kelch, 78340 Holgermann Road. I trust you can hear me okay? I'm on the phone. I'm on the phone, can you hear me? Hello? Hello? Just a second, hold on, shoot. Hello, can you hear me?
Another name, we'll come back and see if we can call back in.
That's it. Bruce, I'm sorry, you're not coming through. Okay.
Hello, hello, can you hear me now?
Richard, move on.
Yeah, it's not working.
All right, we have kind of an unusual meeting tonight. We are going to be doing a joint city council and contract review board meeting. So now we're going to call the, that meeting to order. Can the recorder please call, roll?
Counselor Irvin.
Here.
Counselor Fleck.
Here.
Youth representative.
Here.
Counselor Meriday.
Here.
Counselor Savage.
Here.
Counselor Sennett.
Here.
Counselor Roberts.
Here.
Mayor Solzey.
Here.
Public hearing. Public hearing exempting public improvement project from competitive bidding requirements for the biosolids drying equipment. Staff report by Public Works and Development. Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor Solzey and council. The joint public hearing by the city council and the contract review board is to receive testimony regarding exempting competitive bidding requirements for the sole source procurement of biosolid drying equipment at the city's water reclamation facility. The equipment under consideration is a solids dewatering centrifuge produced by Centrisys CNP and a biosolid dryer manufactured by Bioforce Tech. City staff has spent the last four years touring operating biosolid dryers and believes that Centrisys and Bioforce Tech equipment is superior to other biosolid equipment. In 2019- In 2019, Amoresco prepared an energy audit for the water reclamation facility. They highlighted the opportunity to reduce plant operation costs by installing biosolid drying equipment, including recommending Centrisys and Bioforce Tech equipment. In 2019, the city received a price quote of $795,100 for the equipment, less design, installation, and additional support equipment for the operations with basically those two pieces of equipment. Currently, the city generates approximately 175 dry tons of biosolids each year and pays approximately $80,000 a year to the Herd Farms Inc. for additional processing of the biosolids. The proposed new equipment will replace the current solids belt press, chemical thickener, and digesters, allowing the solids to go directly from the clarifiers into the new drying equipment. The new biosolids drying equipment will reduce energy consumption and chemical use. I did some rough calculations today and I looked at last year's budget for chemical purchases that we would no longer need. We spent $74,970. It's a polymer product that helps combine with the solids to help make the removal of water more efficient from the solids. And then it's difficult at this time until we actually have the operating specs of all the necessary equipment. But just by turning off the blow, the compressed air portion of the digester tank, it looks to be about a $15,000 to $20,000 energy savings in electricity costs. The new biosolids equipment will reduce, excuse me, I read that, the dried solids will be used at Middlefield Golf Course and city parks, facilities, reducing the purchase, the need for purchase of fertilizer. The proposed dryer is a large composter that utilizes heat from the composting process for about 75% of the drying process. And in the end, natural gas will be used to generate the final amount of heat necessary to dry the solids to a Class A. Amoresco's 2019 energy audit projected that the city could reduce operating costs by drying the biosolids with the proposed Centrisys and Bioforce Tech equipment. I explained that, what the cost could be, and that would be fine-tuned once the 30% project design documents are completed. I also, at your stations, included what Amoresco produced for just the, to look at the Griffin natural gas dryer. It didn't produce results good enough for, to meet an energy savings project, but it did show a savings in operating costs. And I also included the Energy Trust document, really just to show you that once we can pick the equipment and get the information, the Energy Trust would also analyze that equipment. It's a really detailed report, talks about each piece of equipment, its energy usage and the savings that would accompany it. When we were looking at the gas dryer, the Griffin gas dryer, Energy Trust was offering up a $74,053 contribution to the project to reduce the overall project cost. Their analysis of the newer, more efficient equipment would determine what their contribution to this project would be when it comes time. Also included information, it's already in your packet, in regards to the Bioforce dryer. It shows that when you compare the Bioforce dryer to dryers that use the natural gas as their repellent solely that they have a 70% reduction in use of natural gas. When you compare the dryer, the Bioforce composting dryer to electric source heating units, they have about a 50% less use of electrical energy. And once we do the exact calculations, we'll know what that overall will be. Legal council has prepared the joint resolution for council to consider. I would point out that the joint resolution addresses the contracting needs that the council needs to consider. There's a list of findings on how this opportunity meets those requirements and allows the city council and the joint contract review board to consider this process for approval tonight. The joint public hearing was advertised in the Daily Journal of Commerce on December 26th. And today's city staff, we received one inquiry, it was a couple days after the ad came out. The ad referred them to the webpage with all the information. And the person that contacted me was from Murray Smith, they're an engineering firm. They were not able to access the documents online, so once I clicked the box that I permitted by accident, they were able to access it and they didn't have any further questions. So at this time, it's appropriate for the joint body to hold the public hearing. You can open the public hearing.
I open the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Anyone want to speak? On this item?
Sure. Why would you say go for the Northwest Gas?
Come on up to the podium.
Because we can't count on electric, we really can't. Northwest Gas we can count on. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
And 70% sounds better too.
Do we have any others? I see none. That brings us to item nine, resolution. A resolution exempting public improvement project from the competitive bidding requirements for the biosolids drying equipment. Staff report by Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, mayor. This is the time for council and the contract review board to consider the resolution. I think I gave a pretty detailed explanation, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have concerns with the resolution or the findings or any comments may came up. So I leave it to you for answer questions. And if council staff would recommend that the city council and the contract review board approve the joint resolution of the city council and joint review board exempting the public improvement project from competitive bidding requirements when the time is supposed to end.
Any discussion? Oh, resolution number?
Two zero eight seven.
Any discussion?
Sure.
Counselor Irvin?
Well, I would move that we pass resolution two zero eight seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Will the recorder please, oh, do you?
Yeah, so, and I support this, this project. I think it's going to be a benefit for the city and its residents. I'm excited to see what can be done with the amendments, the soil amendments. I understand there's some difference between amendments and the process to classify something as fertilizer. But along with that, I would express my hope is that we're looking for ways to actually reduce the bills associated with wastewater treatment. And so to be as hawkish as possible over the expenses of this with that in mind. And that's what I want to say on it.
Mayor Sulzby, if I might, I just had a counsel, and thank you. We could go through a testing of the biosolids product in the end and get certified as a fertilizer. Until we do that, it's really appropriate just to refer to it as an amendment, you know, a soil amendment, until we actually go through that process.
Counselor Fleck?
Well, I have some concerns about the process. I think generally this is going to be a benefit for our city, you know, for us to get to the 30% before we actually realize it's we're spending money before we know. Kind of where we're at concerns me a little bit, but I do think that the premise is good, and I'm hopeful that, you know, that ultimately this is going to save the city some money and the ratepayers some money because all of us are paying that pesky water, wastewater and storm bill. So anyway, thank you.
Counselor Meriday?
The process is natural and strong. When the fermentation and the decomposition generates, it's on heat. I witnessed that many times through composting, and it's a good process. And plus, we own what we created, and it stays in the community, and we utilize what we gave back. So it's, it's a kind of like closed loop.
Any other questions, discussion?
I've eaten it.
Will the recorder? We have a motion with a second. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Meriday?
Yes.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Stenich?
Aye.
Counselor Roberts?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Youth representative? Mayor Sulzby?
Aye.
Okay. Now we're going to adjourn that meeting and resume our regular city council meeting. Public hearings, I see none. Consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second. Got a move approval in a second? Will the recorder please call the roll? Oh, we don't need to.
So we just do the general vote on this one?
Okay.
All those in favor?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Oppose. Resolutions and ordinances. Resolution supporting a grant application to the Oregon Community Paths Grant Program for Lincoln Middle School Path. Staff report by Public Works, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, mayor. So through the summary, I'd just like to share, we were watching for grant opportunities for projects in the city and noticed that the Oregon Department of Transportation had announced they were taking applications for the Oregon Community Paths Grant Program. So in September 2022, city staff worked with ALCOG to submit a pre-application to ODOT to the Oregon Community Paths Grant Program to construct a new path along the Coastport River and Central Cottage Grove connecting Hayes Avenue to the Lincoln Middle School. That's phase one, and phase two would be to extend it from the middle school down to Sixth Street connecting with Golden Park, making a nice path bikeway from the center of town to the southern portion of the city. On October 5th, 2022, ODOT informed staff the pre-application was approved and that the city is authorized to submit an official state construction application by January 31st, 2023. The attached resolution is recommended to be included with the city's official application showing the city's support for the project. We have, if you've looked at the agenda, we also have accompanying two other, but they're just support letters, and the reason that this is being recommended as a resolution is because this project is new and it hasn't been adopted in a transportation system plan or something formal, so that's why we're proposing the resolution. So the recommendation is the city council support the resolution for the Lincoln Middle School Path Grant, application to the ODOT's Oregon Community Paths Program. Costs we have committed to paying, once we submitted the final application, are paying about $3,000 for the total services to submit a formal grant to ODOT. If it's approved, the city application, the city would be required to pay 30% match. This will be provided in our SBC Parks Fund, possibly, let's see, it'd be the Parks Fund in the 2023-24 city budget, and it qualifies because it's an enhancement, it's an increase in capacity in our system. We will also be looking for additional grant opportunities to qualify approaching other foundations and that to help us with that match.
Do we have the resolution number?
Two zero eight eight.
Madam Mayor, I move that the council adopt resolution two zero eight eight.
Right.
Any discussion? Counselor Savage?
Thank you, Mayor Sulzby. I just want to make a comment. On Friday when we were visiting and I'm thinking, gosh, this path is so great, I'm so excited for this path, and here we are, right behind a whole bunch of folks' homes. Is there any way we could put a privacy fence up? I loved your grin from ear to ear when you looked at me, Mr. Stewart, and you said, "We did." So I want to say thank you for putting up that privacy fence, I really appreciate that. I support this, thank you.
All right. We have a motion with a second. I'm sorry?
Call the roll.
Oh, the recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Stenich?
Aye.
Counselor Roberts?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Counselor Meriday?
Aye.
Mayor Sulzby?
Aye.
Okay, that moves us to item B, second vote on ordinance three one six seven as amended, amending chapter nine point two eight and twelve point two four of the Cottage Grove Municipal Code Regarding Offenses By or Against Miners and City Parks and Public Playgrounds. Staff report by the city manager, Mr. Myers.
So this is the ordinance that you had at the previous council meeting in December, and at that council meeting, the city council amended the ordinance by changing those camping terms, or the use of the word, or the form of the word camp, to mirror what the courts had said in sleeping, lying, sitting, keeping warm and dry. The courts' language is actually sitting, lying, sleeping, staying warm and dry. And so the ordinance has been amended by going through and finding all of the forms of the word camp and taking out those that refer to that constitutionally provided right of those individuals experiencing homelessness by the courts and putting those in place. Now, there are still some forms of the word camp, campsite, or camping in the code because we do allow camping under special event permits for events that occur within the community. Bike events, BMD, other events that occur in the parks. And so we have, we have to make sure that we still maintain camping used in that sense to protect those. So you have a copy of the ordinance as it was revised with the yellow highlights highlighting all of the forms of the word camp. And the ones that are changed are then highlighted, and you can see that as well, where we've taken out camping and either set sites or campsites or merged things. There are a couple of locations where we've changed campsites to areas where those campsites were referring to a location that allowed the sitting, sleeping, lying, resting, sitting, sleeping, lying, keeping warm and dry, and city in there. That's why we use camping. Putting the language in from the court made sense. And the areas then refer to those locations rather than saying campsite, we said, or camping, we changed that to area, and so we've changed those. In one location, we changed camping or sleeping to be the full term as well. You also have a clean copy of the ordinance with all the highlights removed and the stricken language removed as well that can be adopted. This ordinance has been changed even from the amendment you made to it. By putting those in, we found those issues, and some of those weren't items that you asked for in the amendment at the last meeting. And so if this ordinance meets the requirements or... And so if this ordinance meets the requirements or the needs of the council, then you do need to vote to adopt the ordinance as presented with the amendments that are in it. Because some of those amendments, we switched the words around to mirror the the court language. We fixed the site, campsites to areas. Those weren't things that were in the original amendment. So you have the ordinance before you. This basically implements and puts into code meets the requirements of House Bill thirty-one fifteen. In July, the legislature a year ago passed a law that says by July two thousand and twenty-three, you have to fix your code so that it doesn't have any impact on those individuals that are experiencing homelessness. So everywhere that we prohibit some activity that may affect or impact those experiencing homelessness, we had to fix. And so that's why we're taking out our curfew ordinance. We have an ordinance that requires that that after eleven o'clock or something like that, any youth in a public place or on the streets or in parks, they can violate curfew. A youth can be homeless. And so that would impact homelessness or homeless youth. We've taken that section out of our code. We still can enforce the state statute for curfew. State statute for curfew is almost exactly the same language as ours. The House Bill thirty-one fifteen only applies to cities and counties. It doesn't apply to state statutes. So by taking it out of our code, we can still use the state statute for curfews on youth in in our in our community. And it does violate House Bill thirty-one fifteen. The other provisions we have in our code, we never did prohibit camping in our parks. We just didn't do that. What we did is in our code, you cannot be in a city park after ten o'clock at night and before five in the morning, which essentially prohibits camping. But we never said you can't camp. You just can't be in the parks, period. That would be a violation of House Bill thirty-one fifteen. So by adopting this ordinance, what we're doing is we're saying you can't be in the parks between ten o'clock and five in the morning except with, and if we go to the right one, N-K, under pursuant to the management plan for the use of public lands by individuals experiencing homelessness. So what we've done in our resolution that we've already adopted back in December, we've created that plan, we've adopted that plan that has identified all of our public lands, parks, public lands, including the water plants, the sewer plants, the reservoirs, every piece of public property which is under the court cases. The court cases say that House Bill, the court cases, Martin, Boise, Blake and Johnson cases against Grants Pass, all say that homeless individuals can camp or sit, sleep, lie, stay warm and dry on public lands, not necessarily parks, but all any public land they can be on those to take those actions. In violation of any of those, those are considered essential things in life. And any violation or prohibited those kinds of actions is under the Constitution and the Eighth Amendment, a violation of the Constitution. So what we have done in this is that we've designated places on public lands. And the courts opened it and said, you can take opportunities to restrict. You can find time, place and manner restrictions to control and manage where people can operate those constitutionally protected actions. By adopting our code and by doing our public lands, use of management plan, public lands for those experiencing homelessness, we have created and designated locations that can be used for that, those protected actions. And then we've identified other lands that if, hey, if we need to, we'll move to these as well. We cannot restrict based on where they're from. We cannot restrict from what their purposes or what their reasoning or anything. The courts have not recognized any of that. And so we've created those tiers, those levels of lands. Some of our properties really aren't good places for camping. We don't want people camping up at the water reservoirs, for example. It's a secure location. Our water treatment plant, wastewater treatment or reclamation facility, our work sites, they can be dangerous. There's open facilities there. Those aren't suitable. A dog park is a suitable place. The skate park is a suitable place. And so many of those are in our level three that are, yeah, if everything has failed and we have to use them, we'll look at those. So they are typically off limits for anything and all of our provisions in our code stand for those sites. Level two are the sites that, hey, if we fill up the level one sites, then we can look at some of these. Some of them might have time restrictions or date restrictions, such as our North Regional and East Regional Park. Those parks can have severe wildfire issues because there's a lot of undergrowth. Those are nature parks. And so we really don't want people camping in those during dry weather. And so we have that provision that, hey, those would be possible locations, but not from the time of April through November. May also be, even after November, may not be good in the East Regional Park because it floods extensively and it may not be a suitable location. So we've looked at those. Level one sites are the ones that we've already identified. We have the the facility for sheltering at on Twelfth Street, the old warming shelter site. We have the Douglas property and we have the Pioneer Park over here on the other corner of the bridge. And just a small section of those locations have been identified. We've fenced them off so it's controlled and managed and that's a place where they can camp under this ordinance. And so that's what this ordinance does. It creates a way for us to manage and keep our properties that we can manage in a way that we can use most of our parks and our properties as we have designed them for and still be able to provide and meet the requirements of the court cases and House Bill thirty-one fifteen.
Madam Mayor, I move that the city council dot ordinance number thirty-one sixty-seven as amended.
Sure.
Any discussion? Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just full transparency, I haven't had a chance to read this in depth. That's my fault. But I haven't been, there's a lot of changes and I've only scanned it. And so that's, like I said, it's my fault for not being able to get get to it in time from late Wednesday. But I would like more time with it. But so I propose that we postpone it. It sounds like we have till July to, before we're at real risk. But if everybody else did their homework, then don't hold it up for me.
Can we, since we have a motion to second, withdraw this and bring this to the next meeting?
Can you just postpone the vote? I think the person that made the motion can withdraw it. Yeah. Or you just postpone the vote. Jake's looking it up. Because I'm wondering if you can postpone the vote and then just have the vote at the next meeting.
I I'm okay with either, but I don't see the need to, you know, push this through if there's somebody who wants to, a member that wants to review it. I don't have any problem with that at all.
I support that, too.
So do we need a motion to postpone or just a consensus? How do we move forward on that? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping the
Wait and see.
Roberts Rules.
I would, I would envision that if the maker of the motion.
I I see. Yes.
Madam Mayor, counsel, Roberts Rules of Order does appear to allow a withdrawal of a motion before the question is stated. So as long as it hasn't been set up for a vote, it it can be withdrawn.
And the second would have to also agree, correct?
It doesn't say that. At least in the tiny part of this that I've had the time to go through it, may, you know, for all I know, on page three hundred and ninety-seven, I might say.
I I will withdraw the motion and ask that this be brought forward at the next meeting.
And if the second wishes to agree, that would be cool, just in case.
Okay. So moving on to item C. Second vote on ordinance number three one six eight vacating on one hundred and ninety-eight square feet of a right-of-way located at the southeast corner of the intersection of South Seven, East Fillmore. Staff report by Public Works, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Public Works and Development Department brings before the city council ordinance number three one six eight for a second vote and adoption. The first vote on the ordinance number three one six eight occurred on December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, following a public hearing during which no public comments were received. Recommendation is for council to hold the second vote on ordinance number three one six eight.
Counselor Fleck?
Madam Mayor, I move that the council adopt resolution thirty-one sixty-eight.
Sure.
We've got a motion and a second. Will the recorder please call the roll? Oh, sorry, any discussion?
Did I, oh, I apologize, ordinance number thirty-one sixty-eight.
Recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Stenich?
Aye.
Counselor Roberts?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Counselor Mary Day?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Mayor Sulzwee?
Aye.
Business from the city council. Item A, election of the council president. Staff report by city manager, Mr. Myers.
So at the first meeting of every year, the city council is charged under the charter to elect a council president who would act in the place of the mayor if the mayor is unavailable and unable to perform their duties. In the last two years, Counselor Fleck has served as the council president.
Counselor Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor Sulzwee. You have Mike has done a very good job as council president. Pass him on. Thank you for your service. I would like to nominate Mr. Greg Irvin as council president for the next two years, I guess that is, or year.
Madam Mayor, I guess I'd also like to nominate Counselor Savage. I think we have a huge opportunity between either of them. I know that Counselor Savage, after our last National League of Cities, has been very encouraged to do this. But I I would certainly recommend, we've only been doing this every other year with an election. And I think our charter does call for it to be every year. And I would recommend we change that every year so everybody gets a chance to run meetings because it is tough. I mean, you know, trying to know all of the procedural things, I think it would be a real opportunity for everybody to do that. But I can support either candidate for sure.
Can I second? I'd I'd like to second Greg Irvin, Counselor Irvin.
So do we do this by motion or by nomination? Because there's a little different process between both.
You can, I mean, you're nominating people to be selected by the council, but then there's going to be required a motion of some sort to vote on. So.
So it sounds like we have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
I'm ready to have a shot.
Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Roberts?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Can I vote on this?
Yep.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Counselor Mary Day?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Stenich?
Aye.
Mayor Sulzwee?
Aye.
Congratulations. All right. Item B, city council subcommittee and liaison appointments. So we had a very outdated list and so city staff called around to find out what all of our what time all the meetings are, what dates, so that we have some clarity on this. As of now, I would like to leave it as is. So this way, I I went through and looked at all of them. And most of us have three committees, except for John and Chalice. And I know you guys both expressed interest on taking on another committee. And but we're just looking at time for you and which is, so we went ahead and and got all the the times of the committees. So we should get together and also Dana needs to have some committees. And so I think, I believe there's, I wrote them all out, there's enough to make it so that it would be pretty even across the board with all of us, with the incoming person, too. So that that'll make it a little easier to iron out. And if you want Counselor Fleck to take act, you can do that as well.
So so that that would be my only concern is I'm thinking of Mayor Gowing's commitments would be ElCog, the Lanier.
I'm so sorry, I should have clarified that. I'm going to take all of those. And
Except for the act.
And you can go ahead and take the act.
Okay, because that meeting's Wednesday. I just want to make sure we're not missing any meetings. Thank you.
That works out perfectly. Thank you.
Mayor Sulzwee? If you have your, the dates or the the days that they need, if I could request any Mondays not meeting? That would be great.
Absolutely.
Glad to serve on any way possible, but.
Absolutely. We'll go, we'll go through them all, make sure it fits with your schedule as well. That brings us to item C, planning commission appointments. Staff report by Public Works Development Director, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So council appointed a subcommittee to conduct interviews for candidates for the planning commission vacancies created by term expirations on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. The subcommittee was appointed at the November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two city council meeting. Counselor Roberts was appointed as chair. Counselors Irvin and Fleck were the remaining three counselors on the interview subcommittee. There are two vacancies on the public, the planning commissions. Staff advertised the vacancies via the Cottage Grove Sentinel and the city's website. Three applications were received and interviews were scheduled this afternoon for Stephen Thomes, Jeff Gowing and Tom Monroe. Subcommittee, I would like at this time turn this over to the chair of Counsel Roberts to share the recommendation of committee to the council.
Counselor Roberts?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, the council, in the committee sat, we listened to three great interviews today. I want to thank Counselor Irvin and Fleck for that. And it is our recommendation that beginning January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, and ending on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, that the two seats go to Jeff Gowing and Tom Monroe.
Needs to be a motion.
Is that a motion, Counselor?
Is that a, I need to make a motion for that? Okay, I make a motion for that.
Second.
Will the recorder please call?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. So I do want to just encourage Mr. Thomes. I'm not sure if I can.
Steve?
Steven, yeah. You know, please stay with it. These are, these openings come up often. And we would really love to see folks, you know, continue to be interested in our committee. So I I please don't take this as any, you know, mandate that we're not interested in having you serve with our city. We just had two slots for three folks. So please continue being interested in our city. Thank you.
Will the recorder please? I'm sorry. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That brings us to item D. Urban Forestry Committee Appointments. Staff report by Public Works, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So once again, on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, we have term limits. we have term limits of positions on the Urban Forestry Committee that expire. A subcommittee was appointed on November fourteenth at the City Council meeting. We have Counselor Irvin as the Chair, and Counselor Savage and Mayor Solzby as the other individuals from the council that did the interviews. There are two vacancies on the Urban Forestry Committee. Staff advertised the vacancies via the Cottage Grove Sentinel and on the city's website. Four applicants were received, and interviews were scheduled with Susan Johnson, Mark, she's an incumbent, Mark McCaffrey, an incumbent, and Don Norton, applied, and Linda Yellen had applied with your application in the final days. The subcommittee, so at this time, I'd like to turn this over to Counselor Irvin to share the recommendation to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I'll just reiterate what Counselor Fleck stated. Yeah, coming in to interview, to apply, to volunteer, is really greatly appreciated, and it's one of those ways that actually get experience of seeing how the city operates, and it just can only do good things for understanding and of what goes on, and I guess sympathy in some ways, too. So with that, I just want to say thank you to everybody who applied, and we're recommending Susan Johnson, as well as Mark McCaffrey, be stated into these terms from January nineteen-nine, two thousand and twenty-three, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. And so I'd make a motion to that effect.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item E, vacant city councillor-at-large position. Staff report by city manager, Richard Myers.
So the position's not vacant yet, the seat's still warm. But Counselor Roberts has announced at the last council meeting that he would be stepping down at the conclusion of this meeting, and that creates a vacancy. Under our charter, the City Council is charged with filling vacancies on the council, and by a majority vote, you can do that. We'd like to get started right away. We have lots of things to do in the next couple of months. And so if the council desires to have a recruitment process, we'd like to get started on that if that's the direction we want to go. So it's for you to determine how you want to appoint, or select, or get recruitments going for this, and we will get it moving quickly so that we can take care of that before too late in February.
Counselor Savage?
Thank you so much, Mayor Solzby. I'd like to make a motion that we take applications. Let's advertise and take applications and get this going.
Second.
Any other discussion? Counselor?
I like, I like that idea. It does make me curious, what are our options? That's, you know, the applications seem to make sense, but I am a curious cat, so what are, what are the options for this?
You could walk out on the street and grab somebody and say you're now a councillor and bring them in, man. From all of that, I mean, you could, you could name somebody tonight. I mean, it's wide open. The council has to do it by a majority vote. So, you know, typically, the easy way to do that is applications, because then you have those to look at, you interview them, the council will interview them as a whole, and then make a.
That's how I got here, was by application and interview.
Yeah.
Same.
I'd like to see the community have that same opportunity to fill this seat.
Counselor Senate?
Thank you. Richard, you said we have a lot to do. Can you unpack that a bit?
If you go down.
Sort of characterize a lot and how fast, I guess.
You, you've got seven work sessions that you're scheduling in the next three months as well, that are later in the agenda. So there, there are lots of things that are triggering the grant application. We need to make those decisions so the engineers can get started, so we can get going on the street grant that has to be finished by a certain date. So you've got, then you've got your normal goal setting, you've got your normal training that we do every two years when there's new elections. Yeah.
Which is the first week of March was the goal setting, something like that.
The goal setting usually towards the first or middle of March, yeah.
Can you, I'm sorry, one more. Can you refresh us on kind of, if you recall the timeline for our last appointment? I think it was satisfactory.
If, if we want to go out and advertise, we can advertise for, you know, two weeks. That would give us into, towards the end of January, advertise it until maybe the end of January, take those applications, and then have to schedule a meeting or a work session before a meeting to do the interviews of those applications in addition to the other seven work sessions that are on the agenda already. And you could have, you could have that done at the meeting in February, on the thirteenth, although the mayor's might be gone on the thirteenth. Yeah, we might wait until the last meeting in February.
You're making me feel bad now. I've got enough to do.
That sounds good, ma'am. The twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
And just for the public, all of the same rules would apply, registered voter for the last year, registered voter, and living within the city for the last year.
Right, and it isn't that large position, so you do have to be a qualified elector, and you can be in any ward, so, yeah.
Okay. So we're going to move it to go ahead and start advertise, and do it on the twenty-seventh? Is that what we've looked at, or do we need?
We had a motion, right? It was pretty broad, though. It didn't have those specifics.
Yeah, it just, you know, if you want to get specific and set those timelines, that'd be great, but if not, I mean, we can shoot for, if you want to try to do it before the thirteenth of February, you possibly could, and have a special meeting to do the interviews and, and make the appointment.
Counselor Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. So theoretically, if I understand this correct, we can receive applications. Can we have a goal of by the next meeting, let's have these applications received so we can review them, and then between the next meeting, and I realize you're out on February thirteenth, but maybe we could hold something, tack it on to something we're potentially already scheduling later, and have some interviews, and we can't vote on anything without being at City Council, though, is that correct?
No, you can, you can hold a special meeting.
We can hold a special meeting and appoint somebody who could then jump in and attend these work sessions that we already have scheduled, because that would, or that we're about to schedule, because that person is going to want to be in on some of these. I would like to move faster rather than slower, just to have somebody in. So I propose that we, let me amend my motion and say I would like applications in to us by the next City Council meeting so that we can review them. That can be that first date, and then we can start scheduling interviews.
Just to clarify, that would be by the twenty-third?
Yes.
Which is two weeks.
Yeah.
So your second would have to accept the amendment?
Who suck it in?
Oh, I did. I just, I accept it. I, I knew that, I was just checking. Yes, I, I think we can manage in two weeks. I think anybody who's paying attention is paying attention. I accept the amendment.
I was just going to ask, are we confident that we can get the word out in two weeks? I mean, what's our, what's our mechanism for that?
We've already had the word out for three or four weeks, because Counselor Roberts announced that.
I meant officially, I know everybody.
Yeah. So I think there are some people that are waiting in the wings to find out what you wanted to do, and they're ready to do an application. So I think two weeks you're still, you're going to get applications.
Okay.
And, and I would offer, if we didn't, we can always extend that, you know, application period.
So we have a motion and a second. Will the recorder please call the roll? Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Brings us to item G, City Council Approval of East Regional and North Regional Park Trail Grant Support Letters.
That's what I ordered.
I think the point that was.
That brings us to item F, Municipal Court Judge Contract Renewal and Amendments. Staff Report by City Manager, Mr. Myers.
You've heard the judge's report, you held an evaluation, and so you have his, the municipal court judge's contract available for you with the amendments to extend it one year based on those evaluations.
Get to that item, but I would move that we do so, that we extend the contract, and been very happy with the judge and the information coming back and how it runs the court.
Counselor Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor Solzby. Yeah, I'd like to say that the last time we talked, him was very informative. I thought he did a really, really good job. I think that over the years, he's, you know, and the fact of what getting us through COVID, that was another huge thing. You got that court system through COVID. You've got to give him credit for that, too. I like Judge Fisher, and I think he's earned this. Thank you.
Counselor Savage?
Thank you so much, Mayor. One of the things that I wanted to have was more communication, and I just want to say that I really appreciated his email to come down on Thursday, and I was able to attend a little bit, but the kindness and compassion that I saw in that brief time was amazing.
Second. We need a second before the discussion.
And I don't think the, the motion mentioned authorized the mayor to sign the contract.
Yeah, I'd like to amend my motion that the City Council consider the contract renewal an amendment for the municipal court judge, and if the council desires, which we do by motion, approve and renew the amendment of the municipal court judge contract and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. And then I realized that half of that didn't need to be said. So I'm going to further amend it and say a move that we approve the renewal and amendment to the municipal court judge contract and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, item G, City Council Approval of East Regional and North Regional Park Trail Grant Support Letters. Staff report by Public Works, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So in September of two thousand and twenty-two, city staff worked with LCOG to submit a pre-application to the ODOT Oregon Department of Transportation Oregon Community Paths Grant Program to resurface the regional, the north regional park trail, and a second pre-application for a refinement grant for the east regional trail located in the Round River Nature Park. The north regional park trail application is to resurface the trail, bringing it up to ADA standards. The east regional park application is to complete the planning and NEPA work necessary to resurface the east regional park trail. On October fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, ODOT informed staff with the pre-application to where approved, and that the city is authorized to submit an official state construction application for each proposal by January thirty-first. The attached support letters are recommended to be included with the city's official application showing that city support for the project. So the recommendation is for City Council to approve the north and east regional park grant application support letters to ODOT's Oregon Community Paths Program. At Chair, each of these applications are three thousand dollars apiece when the final grant application is submitted. And at the present time, the thirty percent match for these projects would be taken out, or proposed budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four bicycle and footpath fund. And once again, I would say that we'll be looking for grant opportunities to help reduce that match on the city's budget.
Counselor Fleck?
Madam Mayor, move that the City Council approve the north and east regional park grant application support letters to ODOT's Oregon Community Paths Program.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Our discussion?
Aye.
Yeah, I'm excited for this path to be redone. It's such a cool, long path through so much of the city, and it's in really bad repair. And, yeah, this is one of those things that's neat when family come out and take a walk around the city, and you get to see so, so much of the beautiful landscape. So addressing that, I think, is really going to enhance livability in the city. So full support.
Anyone else? No. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item H, Setting Work Session Dates. Staff Report by City Manager, Mr. Myers.
As we gave the teaser earlier, the previous agenda item, there is a lot of work that's going to be started in the next little while. There's actually not listed on this list of work sessions, one scheduled for the twenty-third of January, the Main Street program refinement program, and the EDA grant, trying to pull that together so we can talk about those things and mesh what the EDA grant requirements are. And so we'd like to do that at six o'clock on the twenty-third before the council meeting. Now, the, most of the others are, we've got some various dates in there, what would work for people. The Government Ethics, Public Meetings, and Public Records, which will have our city attorney come and go over the statutes and requirements associated with those. We're looking at possibly Fridays in the morning. We say starting at eight, but it can start a little later than that on, on a Friday, or on Monday, January thirtieth, which is a fifth Monday. There is no meeting of the council on that date, but, and that could be a possibility as well. It would be nice to make sure that the new councillor would be appointed before this so that they would be attending that Government Ethics, because highly likely that we won't have anybody who's been a councillor before appointed, and that'd be a good resource there. In light of that, we may look at Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, to have a special meeting. We could put that on this list as well, a special meeting to go over those applications on a Tuesday, so that we have a decision actually on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, and then you'd have the twenty-seventh, the third, or the thirtieth to be able to get them into training. Just a suggestion there, if that's something that would work. Another work session to take in the Police Department presentation and information about how, what's going on there and statistics, as well as look at the new city personnel manual. Both of those are about a half-hour presentation. The city personnel manual currently was adopted originally back in the eighties, and has been amended over the years as laws and state laws change. What we've done is we've worked with our insurance company and created a whole new person, and our, and our attorneys, a whole new personnel manual that reflects all of those changes over the years and complies with the new laws that have been passed regarding personnel. And so we'd want to go over that in a, a meeting before the council has an opportunity to look at it. So we'd look at that on the thirteenth in this brief work session, and then on the twenty-seventh of February, we'd actually, the second meeting in February, we'd actually look at an adoption possibly on it. City Council Rules, we've wanted to do a work session on that. This will be a long work session, so I don't have listed in here starting before a council meeting, because it may be something that will take a little longer than an hour. We could do the twenty-eighth of February, which is a Tuesday, you could start whatever time works best there. We've also looked at Friday, March third, that's in the mornings, if that works. So those are options. The Affordable Housing Implementation Plan is complete. The final report is on the city's website. I included the web address here so that we can get people to read it before we have this work session, please. It is available on the website. It's, it will have some good information from that analysis that was done, what we can be doing for affordable housing. We're going to be putting more information together for the work session as well, to give you some guidelines of what kind of timelines might be involved, how, how fast some of the different actions in the plan could be taken, and what possible impacts of those would be. So we're looking at Monday, the twenty-seventh, starting maybe even at five-thirty before a council meeting then, or at six, or some other date. So that's, we're, we're kind of looking at the twenty-seventh, and we'd like to then come back to a council meeting and bring, start bringing the items forward as we're in the springtime or early spring when development's not really happening, and we get that moving. Goal setting, another work session. This is typically a four-hour session, at least one. And so we've looked at Saturdays, March fourth and eleventh, from eight to noon. And then the Southland County Enterprise Zone is up for renewal this year. We are the administrators of the Southland County Enterprise Zone. It includes Cottage Grove, the area between Cottage the area between Cottage Grove and Cresswell, and Cresswell in the Enterprise Zone. We'd like to have a work session. This will probably be a shorter work session, but we could start at six o'clock on the thirteenth before the council meeting and easily be completed before the council meeting. We want to have a work session to kind of talk to the council, here's where we're going, the directions, because then we need to go to Cresswell, and we need to go to Lane County Board of Commissioners as well as we go through the renewal process on this. Those are just a little bit of things to do over the next couple of months. And based on your calendars, how do those dates work? Do any of those dates work? How can we adjust things?
Counselor Flack.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Actually, all of the dates work for me, except for February twenty-seventh. As I mentioned, Friday, my wife has put up with me for thirty-five years, and that anniversary is on that date. And so I need to spend that afternoon with my wife. But other than that, I'm actually pretty free on, actually, all of the rest of those times.
Counselor Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. I did figure out January twenty-third, so I will not physically be here, but I can zoom in early for the Main Street talk, as well as city council that night. So I won't be here in person, but I'll be here virtually. If I had a choice, city council rules, I would appreciate Friday, March third, although I could make the other date work, but my preference would be March third. Goal setting dates, I would prefer the eleventh. I think that's it. On my end.
Counselor Stenath.
I believe I can make the, all the dates work. I would reiterate a preference to start a little after eight, so I can get my kiddos to school. If that's cool. Could be even eight-fifteen.
So for the affordable housing, what if we moved that to the Friday before that council meeting? So we do it after the agenda session, on Friday, the twenty-fourth, instead of Monday, the twenty-seventh, if we did it from eight-thirty to nine-thirty or nine-fifteen, somewhere around there.
I like that.
Okay.
All right.
For the training, January twenty, twenty-seven, February third, or January thirtieth, which works best? The thirtieth of January, it is another Monday, the...
The fan. Can we wait till we appoint, or if we are active on the appointment, so that we can get a new counselor in training?
The, the challenge is that we, we do want, we got to get it scheduled with the attorney to make sure we have that date. These are dates that are actually available for the attorney, so making sure we get on the calendar and we reserve it so that nobody else bumps it.
Wouldn't we just have to redo it when the new one comes?
There, I, I don't know if all of you'd want to sit through. It's good to have everybody there at the training. Doing the training with just one counselor, one new counselor and nobody else at the meeting, unless you guys, if you want to come for the second one and do it again. But, yeah, I, I think it'd be more beneficial with everyone in place. I don't know if you've sat in on Carrie's?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it would be best to have everybody present. I don't know what...
But that's kind of the point, though. If, if, on the twenty-third, then we're supposed to get the applications back.
So if you, if you do the special meeting on the twenty-fourth, where you actually interview and make the selection, then you've got, you wouldn't have the twentieth available, because it's past, but you do have the twenty-seventh or February third, which is, those are Fridays. You could do training after an agenda session again.
On the twenty-fourth, Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, I'll be in Salem for Lake of Oregon City's board meeting. However, we've been getting done around two o'clock, and I know that we have an evening engagement that usually starts around six. So if it's somewhere between two and six, I can zoom in.
I, I am available on the third, as long as I'm done by one o'clock. Oh. That makes it.
February third.
Third for the training.
For, for the council rules.
Yeah. No, the, the council, government ethics, public meetings and stuff like that.
All right.
Does that work, the third?
Early.
Yeah, early, in the, after agenda session. Well, there wouldn't be an agenda session on the third. It'd be in place about eight-thirty.
Okay.
Nine-thirty, ten o'clock.
Yes.
All right. I am available on January twenty-third for the grant. And, uh, council rules, uh, March third is my preference. Goal setting, uh, March eleventh would be what I could do. I'm not available on the fourth.
Anyone else?
Concerns?
Oh, no, not yet.
So.
Sounds like eleventh was by consensus on the goals.
Yeah, and the goal setting, it sounds like March eleventh, Saturday, March eleventh is there. Sounds like February third was good for the government ethics training. And that gives us a little more time, the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth. You could do a special meeting somewhere in there before the third. What's the, it'd be nice to get that on. The twenty-seventh is a Friday. Do you want to do the interviews? I, I, it might be good. I don't know, we don't know who's going to apply. It probably wouldn't be good to try to do those in the morning, because you may end up with somebody who can't do the morning. But, I mean, we do have the thirtieth. What time do you need to be out for scouts?
Seven to eight.
Seven to eight. So, I mean, on the thirtieth, could we start at five-thirty or something like that on Monday, the thirtieth, and do interviews for applicants?
Same.
So that would be a special meeting, and...
What time did you say?
Five-thirty?
Okay.
On the...
Or earlier.
Which date again?
The thirty, Monday, the thirtieth, January.
To interview our potential?
Yeah.
Do we condense the interview based on the number of applicants, if we've got a set timeline?
Yeah, if, if you have two applicants, we're not going to take a whole hour. I, I mean, it, so if we have twenty applicants, we may need to look at another date. I don't think we want to go that long, but we can do and shorten and make that fit, yeah.
That would be the full council.
Yeah, it'd be the full council. The intent would be to try to be done before seven, so we're not conflicting with Council Mary Day's other appointments on Monday night.
So we're looking at the thirtieth as opposed to the twenty-fourth?
Right. Counselor Savage is going to be off.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Kind of keep straight where everybody is.
All right. That's, that, that works for me.
That worked.
Did we decide council rules day?
We're, we're, we're going there now.
Oh, sorry.
So the thirteenth sounds good still for the department, Police Department and Personnel Manual. That's before a council meeting, six o'clock.
I'll be zooming.
You'll be zooming. City Council rules, it sounded like there were a number that were saying March third, Friday, March third.
Third works for me.
Does that... Starting after eight o'clock, so it would probably start at eight-thirty or something like that. Or we could start earlier but be away from eight o'clock, so you could get back, but... Eight-thirty keeps it consistent with the agenda session. And I think there was some consensus on the affordable housing, doing that on February twenty-fourth, after the agenda session, that's Friday. Goal setting on the eleventh, and the enterprise renewal, enterprise zone renewal work session on the thirteenth, Monday, the thirteenth, before council meeting at six.
Is that the twenty-third?
Huh?
Twenty-third?
The, the thirteenth of March. Yeah.
You're going to send this out, right?
Yeah. Now, somebody has to make a motion and list all these out.
Oh, you're serious?
No, I'm not. If, if everyone has got consensus on those, then we'll provide you out of notice, and we'll do the notice requirements for those meetings. Okay? We'll get that out.
Now that we've done that, can we just say it in order?
You want me to go through them again?
Not with discussion, just really quickly, go Government Ethics. I think we said February third.
Okay. So, starting with the most, the most, we'll start in order. January twenty-third, before the city council meeting at six o'clock, we'll have a work session on the Main Street Refinement Plan and the EDA Grant. On January thirtieth, Monday, January thirtieth, at five-thirty, we'll have a special meeting. This won't be a work session. This will be a special council meeting to interview applicants and make a selection for, to fill the vacancy. On February third, Friday, February third, from eight-thirty to ten o'clock, we'll have the Government Ethics, Public Meetings and Public Records Training from our city attorney. On February thirteenth, we'll, before the council meeting at six o'clock, we'll have the Police Department Presentation and the City Personnel Manual. On March third, at eight-thirty, so probably ten, ten-thirty, we'll have the first meeting, probably the first meeting, a work session on city council rules. And then on February twenty-fourth, so we, they're out of order a little bit here, February twenty-fourth, we'll have, after the agenda session, we'll have the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan work session. On Saturday, March eleventh, from eight to noon.
I'm sorry, what, what, what time was that, February twenty-fourth?
It's after the agenda session.
Oh, after.
So we will have the eight-thirty agenda session, and just immediately after that, we'll go into the work session on... Well, actually, it's a work session for the agenda session, too. And then on the eleventh, we'll have the goal setting from eight to noon. And then the Enterprise Zone Renewal Work Session before the council meeting on Monday, March thirteenth, at six.
Okay, thank you.
Cool. And also attached to this memo, for your information, there is some additional information that our, our planning department put together regarding the affordable housing progress that's happened so far. We'll have more information coming for that affordable housing work session in February. But please read the final report before then. You'll have other reading for some of these other work sessions, too, but you might want to start reading that one.
Okay.
Item I, Concerns from Council. Counselor.
All right, I've got a staff report from the Lane Economic Committee. There's two things of note, I think, that can be of interest to our citizens. There was two, there are two grants available. One of them is opening up very soon, I believe, the end of this month. And it's a statewide emergency small business and micro enterprise grant program. It's not a loan. And the eligibility for micro enterprises, five or fewer employees, or small businesses, between five and fifteen hundred employees, that were in business prior to March eighth, twenty nineteen, that they can document COVID-nineteen impact. And that would be things like lost revenue, mandated closures, workforce issues, supply complications, that they were generally strong and stable prior to the pandemic, and they have an owner or employees who meet low and moderate income criteria. Now, these grants are sized between twenty-five hundred dollars and thirty thousand per business. And micro enterprises owners can apply, and they can qualify up to ten thousand dollars. Small businesses can qualify for the twenty-five hundred dollar per LMI employee retained up to thirty thousand dollars. So definitely remember some conversations, right, as pandemic was hitting with some of our small businesses. As far as the criteria is concerned, this looks like it's a little late, but it could help. So I've got that information. Happy to give it to city staff to, to distribute as needed on that. Like I said, I believe the application's open on the twenty-third and might close on the twenty-seventh of January, if I'm not wrong. So it's a narrow window, but strongly encourage. The main focus of the meeting that we had today was kind of an impact report on childhood, early education, and childcare specifically, and kind of the state that we're in in Oregon, known as a childcare desert. It's one of the metrics that they use. And there is a grant also, there's a lot of complications to the issue, but not the least of which is actual startup or getting a facility into a state where it can be certified. And in addition to that, getting wages up, I believe, the average childcare worker is fifty percent of the average of, the average worker in Oregon. So wages are really low. It's hard to incentivize that. So this grant is opening up March twelfth. Kind of the criteria allows for childcare facilities that are certified, as well as the in-home care options. So that's like family, friends, kind of taken care of, up to the, the certification limit. So both of those are available. Five hundred thousand dollars are being opened up for the childcare facilities and up to a hundred thousand for the in-care, in-home. And like I said, the examples that were given were things like putting in a new fence to help, you know, protect the, or sliding doors, something like that, something to bring the facilities up, up to, up to snuff. So more will be coming. This is definitely an area of priority for a number of different agencies, but certainly with the Lane Economic Committee. But those are two opportunities that are coming quick. And so that's called the Seeding Justice Grant. And that came through, information through Onward Eugene. So there's an organization called Onward Eugene that can be reached on, on the web, and that would be a good way to connect with them. And business news, our former mayor mentioned one time when we were discussing the psilocybin issue that there was some regret around how we implemented ordinances around, you know, the use of something new. And one of the things he was bemoaning was the smell of the marijuana waft in, in the city. And I got to thinking, you know, before it was legal, almost everybody that was growing had, like, carbon filters, and they were actually trying to stop that smell from getting out, because that was the way they were going to get caught. Maybe we can, I, I would like to see if there's consensus that we direct city staff to look into something in form of an ordinance, possibly, look at the impacts for requiring, insert, maybe on Main Street or maybe all along the business corridor, some requirement to keep that smell down or eliminated within certain distance. So... I think that'd be a good idea. That's all I got. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Counselor Savage?
Thank you, Mayor Solosky. I sit on the board at the Chamber of Commerce. I'm also, that's one of my boards for representing the city as well. And at our last board meeting, I know that we had decided to look internally for our CEO, and we interviewed the interim CEO, and the recommendation came back that we look at hiring her permanently. So when you see her, please congratulate Georgia, our new Chamber of Commerce CEO. Counselor Irvin, that grant you were talking about for the businesses, can you pass that along to Georgia so that she can spread that to our business sector as well? I think that would be a really good way to get that information out. And congratulations, Council President. Counselor Roberts, what a joy it has been to serve with you and to have known you for the last few years. Tonight's bittersweet, you're turning into a really good friend, and it's going to be really hard to move forward without you. You are such a... You are such a staple in this community, and you, you are truly gonna be missed. So thank you for your service over the years, um, you've gone above and beyond.
And I will say to you, I had my doubts about you, and you have become one heck of a council. You really have. You have grown so much with the show, and you're just gonna do nothing but get better. You will be council president someday too, I, I, I believe that. We're in good hands with you here.
Well, thank you, thank you. Um, we did some appointments tonight for different committees, one of the committees that we did not talk about is the Budget Committee. I know that we did not get enough applications, so I just want to say this out loud to people still listening. Um, this committee does not meet until May, so we still have some time, but if you are interested in getting your feet wet, um, for those of you that didn't get on the committees that, um, we appointed earlier today, or for those of you who are thinking about getting into, um, anything municipal government, this is a great start, and I know that, Bert, I don't know if you're taking applications now? Okay, the nod is yes, so please look for applications and fill them out, we are still looking for folks, it's a great way to, um, get involved. Mayor Solzby, I know that you mentioned the All-American City Award in your, um, State of the City address, and I'd actually written that down as something to come back to, because that was something that I thought that we should apply for again this year. And, uh, Mr. Myers, you had mentioned, ah, but we've won that twice before, there's something else that we can apply for.
The Hall of Fame.
Can we do, is, do we have an update on that?
Yes, there, the, the Hall of Fame applications are out there, and they have the same deadline as the, um, All-American City Award application, which is, the All-American City Award application is tremendously, and that's an understatement, involved. I mean, it is a massive document that you create and answer the questions. The Hall of Fame, um, award is a little more, and little is actually also exaggerated, um, a little less tremendous as the, um, other application, but it, it is meant for those, those communities that have had multiple awards in the past, that then they can get into the Hall of Fame. So, um, I've downloaded the application for that, and we're kind of looking at it and seeing if we qualify. They do have some specific things they're looking for that may not be us, um, but we'll see what we can make fit.
Thank you for that update. Um, another meeting that I attended last week was a really incredible meeting, um, because I'm a board member at the League of Oregon Cities, I was invited to participate in a conversation with, uh, Governor Kotek's, um, office about homelessness and, uh, behavioral health issues. And I ended up being one of twenty-two folks that were invited, the only city counselor that showed up, um, and only one of three, uh, municipal entities. There was, um, Lucy Venice, the Eugene Mayor, and Sean Ben Gordon, the Springfield Mayor, who also attended. Um, outside of that, uh, we had Looking Glass, Trillium, and Pacific Source as examples, and we all came to the table, and we were asked three different questions. What are you doing well that you can share with others? So let's bring that to the table. Uh, what isn't working for you? And what do you need? And then the third question, which is the key question, is how can the state help? And I cannot tell you how quickly I raised my hands and said, funding, funding, funding is how you can help, but I was not alone. And so I just want to encourage folks to know that this may be a long process, but people are talking, the wheels are turning, and funding is going to be very loud and clear the higher up we go. I'm really excited to go to Salem at the end of the month and talk funding with, um, steps ahead of us. So I'm, I'm really excited to do that, and last but not least, congratulations. Uh, Mrs. Mayor, it's amazing to see you up there, thank you for everything that you've done over the last four years and what you're going to be doing for the next two. Thank you so much.
Counselor Savage? So, um, beds for freezing nights was mentioned a little bit earlier in the meeting, and I just wanna say that, um, boy, having run, uh, the warming shelters the previous two years, I just, I really hope folks understand what a huge undertaking it is to, um, organize this process. Um, beds for freezing nights, I'm, I'm blessed with, um, also being involved in helping with them. There are several in the room and, and online that are helping with this program, uh, but we need more. Uh, we've been, you know, making calls out in the community, trying to get some more folks to sign up. And so I would encourage anybody that has a passion to help others to come and sign up for shifts and, you know, get a background check real quick and a training, and, and we'll put you in, uh, you know, in the list there. We, we are activating if, if the weather gets cold. Um, I know this is kind of a tough one, because there are folks that'll say that it's cold at thirty-two, or it's cold at thirty-five, and I, I totally get it. If it's wet especially, and it's, you know, in the thirties, it's cold. Um, but you also have to look at the capacity of an agency. Um, as an example, in the first year our agency ran it, we were at twenty-nine, we operated ten times. In the second year, we raised that threshold to thirty-two, and we operated twenty-seven. Um, so, so the weather, i- it's all cold, there's no judgment on whether it's cold or not, the question is about capacity. And so I think that, um, I just wanna commend the BFN folks for doing what they're able. I wanna commend the folks that have stepped up and asked for more, thank you.
Um, I've been wearing a scout uniform for Monday, on Monday nights, for about five years, and it just kinda so happened that our troop was taking on the citizenship and the community merit badge, and so they arranged to come tonight to see me take office, and I was very proud to see them, both our troops one forty and four-one-forty, which is our girl unit that's sponsored by the American Legion, that they came and was seeing government in action, which answers one of their requirements. There was also some Crestwell Scouts over to participate as well, because they're gonna be working together to earn their merit badge. It teaches, uh, scouting program tries to teach citizens to be what the rights and responsibilities are, and so by doing, they learn, and it was great that they came to a civil meeting, and I like, want to express the civility, I feel uncounseled now, it's very good. I was, uh, very, um, had butterflies in the stomach for a number of weeks leading up to this point, and it's been a, a relief to see that we're, seem to all want to work together for the good of the great, greater Cottage Grove community. We're all in the same boat, uh, I know our nation and community is very divided, the election was very, very close, and, uh, I ran on Grove Together, that we can work together, and that's been my MO since I hit town, and I'll work with anybody who's for something good, and so that's what I pledged to do and continue to do, Scout Son, thank you.
Counselor Stana?
Yeah, I was just curious, I know it hasn't happened since I've lived here, um, when was the last time we had a, a Madam Mayor?
Mayor Jean Sinclair, and she passed away in office, um, and a number of years ago. It was... Early eightens. Yeah, we, we have a list, but yeah, it, early eightens.
The only, only one until?
I think she was, I, I don't know if there was one before, I think she was the only.
Well, I, I just think it'd be nice to publicly acknowledge a little history there, that's, that's pretty cool to me, and, uh, you're doing a great job so far. It's been nice to everybody, thank you.
HOVAP was another one, wasn't it? Or was she just a counselor?
She was a city reporter.
Oh, I guess I got that.
Betty HOVAP, HOVAP. Also, um, I was hoping Council Mary day, that the scouts didn't get a chance to stay with, if you could relay the message, that it's, it's kind of okay to think this is a little bit cool, maybe a little exciting, you know? Um, if you're moved to be part of something like this, that's, you know, that's a good feeling, so.
The Yak has openings.
Exactly.
Anyone else?
Ask about these. I have a favor to ask the council. I came up with this idea a few months ago about the new, uh, shelter that's coming to Prospect and Park, and I talked to Bruce McDonald from the Prospectors and Gold Diggers, and I would like the council to consider, when that thing is erected in Prospect and Park, that you put, you dedicate that to Jeff Gowing, for his years of service in this community. It was Jeff that really worked hard to get that out of a warehouse or to do that, and Jeff has done a lot for this town, and I think it'd be really fitting, the Prospectors and Gold Diggers, they agree with that, but it's up to you to make that happen. And I was, that was something I was gonna, you know, but then, something else came forward, an opportunity to, uh, to move to one of the most beautiful places in the world with what I would call the most beautiful woman in the world. I'm very happy to make this change in my life, but I'm also very sad. I loved doing this, working with a lot of great people in this town, the citizens, the staff. Fay Stewart gave me some great advice in his office a while back, and, uh, I had written a four-page speech, I, I ripped it up. Because what's really important is that you carry on the tradition of Cottage Grove, and do your best to bring back the unity in the community that this town is known for. You've got a lot on your plate, times are a-changing, but you can do it. I have faith in you, and I'm gonna miss you very much. I have this recurring dream that I've been having since I decided to resign. It was when I arrived here, it was on a stormy night, a couple nights before Christmas, nineteen ninety-one, thirty-two years ago. I got off the bus in front of, uh, the barber shop on H Street, and I walked down Main Street, had, uh, directions on the back of a cocktail napkin, and it was like black and white. There wasn't any cars parked on the street, not one car passed me, it just seemed black and white and dark. And I was like, where am I? It felt like it was the Twilight Zone, but what it ended up being was the most colorful city I've ever lived in. And I wanna thank you all for making it that. And it's fitting that Cameron Wrighton got into work tonight, because I wanna thank him too, I have to blame him for all this, because when I started working for Cameron on the morning show, uh, years ago, uh, he got sick. Very rarely that Cameron Wrighton gets sick, and he came to me and said, I need you to go report on what's going on at the council meeting. And to this day, we don't know what that topic was, but it was something important, and I didn't wanna come. But I came and I sat right where he is, and I, it just opened my eyes to what this council does in this community. And I kept going and kept going, then Mayor Monroe came over dancing in the window with a thing to sign up for Budget Committee, because you're absolutely right, Budget Committee's the best way to learn how this town works. And one thing led to another, then I got appointed, and, uh, yeah. I, I feel I, I, I paid back this town for what it's given me, a great life, and it's taught me a lot. So I left some murals and a flagpole, planted over five thousand flowers, I'm proud of what I've done, and I just hope you all continue that, what you do, I'm gonna really, really miss you all, thank you.
Thank you. I just have one more quick thing to say, is it was a real honor tonight to be sworn in with my granddaughter, sitting up here with me, so, thank you, Cadence. All right. Business from the city manager.
I didn't pay there.
I'm sorry?
I didn't pay. Approval of West Yost.
Oh.
We're almost done. We're almost done, just two items.
Oh. Oh, the approval, no wait.
Task work order.
It's, uh, A, right? Yeah. Approval of West Yost Task Work Order twenty-twenty-three dash one, for engineering services for Cottage Grove Water Reclamation Facility Biosolids Thirty Percent Design Documents. Staff report from Public Works Development Director Fay Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So this evening, I've discussed this item at great length, um, in regards to the type of equipment being proposed. Centrifuge with the, uh, composting dryer. So this item, it, West Yost, um, our city engineer record, um, who specializes in our treatment plants, both water and wastewater treatment, um, has proposed a task order to create thirty percent design documents. These thirty percent design documents then would then be used by Sentry System and Bioforce to, uh, complete the design and the necessary, uh, documents, uh, to, uh, implement, install, build, install, and, um, depending on the proposal that council chooses, whether it's an outright purchase of the equipment or a lease-to-purchase option that may be, um, worth considering. Um, they could potentially do some maintenance for the, uh, term of the lease before it turns into ownership of the city. So this evening, I have before you this, um, work task order thirty percent from West Yost. It's a hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Completion, uh, preliminary design, completion would be in July of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, West Yost would also be working with DEQ to make sure that, um, the equipment will meet their expectations and the process is acceptable to them. Um, in the Friday work session, I could not think of the city that, um, is currently also being, um, uh, going through this process, Sandy, Oregon, is also the, um, city that's using the same process and the same equipment. Um, so we'll have a, a place to check in and, and work with. And also, West Yost is very versed, they have a great working relationship with the DEQ, they helped us, um, and we needed to, uh, produce a memorandum of understanding agreement with DEQ for expanding our, uh, effluent treatment program, or, uh, fluid use program, where we built the storage pond and then expanded the use to, uh, both the interchange and also eventually to Cohibing Park and downtown. Uh, so they're very, um, capable of that. So as my recommendation, or city staff recommendation, that council move, uh, to approve task order, uh, two-zero, it should be two-zero-two-three dash one, uh, for the proposal from West Yost for engineering services to develop thirty percent design documents for City Cottage Grove Water Reclamation Facility Solid Project with an amount of one hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-three, and authorize the city manager to, uh, sign the task order. I would share, and, and, uh, I shared this earlier, but in the current budget, uh, that was adopted, that we're operating in, there is a hundred thousand dollar, um, item in our reserve fund that was, uh, specifically for this. It was the ARP funds that was proposed by the city manager during the budget process, so we have a hundred thousand to, and then we'll combine that with the general reserve, or the reserve from the wastewater treatment to make up the additional, uh, sixty-one thousand dollars.
Madam Mayor, move that the council approve Task Work Order two-zero-two-three dash one for the proposal from West Yost, uh, for engineering services to develop thirty percent design documents for the Cottage Grove Water Reclamation Facility Solid, solids project in the amount of one hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars, and authorize the city manager to sign the task work order.
Second.
Got a motion with the second, any discussion? Mr. Stewart, um, do you, do you know how long that Sandy has been using the same system?
They haven't implemented it yet, they're in the same process of...
Right now.
Of actually, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but they may have in the last month already approved their sole source, like we did this evening. They're just a month or so ahead of us in the process.
Great. All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right. All right, item B. City council approval, a purchase of used eight-hundred KW Caterpillar generator. Staff report by Public Works and Development Director Fay Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So it's been a, a long evening, a lot of information for myself, so here's the last one out for this evening. Um, so on November fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, uh, the city's, uh, Caterpillar eight-hundred KW backup generator for the water reclamation facility experienced an engine failure. The unit was having its annual load test, and the engines, staff with the supportive legacy power systems brought in a backup generator for the treatment facility. facility to cover while a plan was developed to repair and replace the failed engine. The backup generator costs the city seventeen thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty cents per month to rent. Two power failures at the water treatment, water reclamation facility have taken place since that backup generator was in place on November fourth. So I want to, I want to share that it's a good thing that we have the backup generator there to ensure that our plant's operational. The city's generator was taken to Peterson Caterpillar in Glenwood to determine, number one, why the engine failed, and number two, the costs associated with rebuilding the engine. The exact cause of the failure has not been determined, other than it was an oil system failure in the bottom end of the engine. Rebuilding the engine is estimated to cost at a minimum of one hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-two thirty, as it's not a hundred percent clear as to which parts, there may be some additional parts that need to be replaced or professional services supplied. And it's also unknown whether or not the parts to rebuild are available at the present time. I did secure some additional information that for rebuilding the engine, it would also take a minimum of sixteen weeks, four months, so we would also incur the monthly rental of the existing backup for those additional four months, and then any additional costs. So to vet, the city options staff searched for used generators and located one used eight-hundred KW Caterpillar generator in Colorado at Generator Source. The located unit is identical to the city's current generator, although it is two years older, it's a two thousand and two model, and it has thirteen thousand, thirteen hundred and forty-seven hours on the unit. And this unit is being offered at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and is available for purchase and shipping as soon as we agree on the contract and are confident that the engine is in good working order. And when I say that, I'm working right now with a couple possibilities. Peterson Caterpillar is preparing a price to possibly send somebody to Colorado to be witness when the load test is being done on this generator and do a complete analysis, get before and after oil samples for analysis, just to ensure that everything is appropriate. The other option is, is they're talking to the actual Caterpillar dealer, which is a different parent company, I think it's Wagner Caterpillar in Denver, to see if they could, what the cost would be to have them just drive fifteen miles and do the same thing. And then also, our local Legacy Power Systems is putting together a price to fly there and, you know, observe the generator. So staff also has researched new unit prices for brand-new Caterpillar, a brand-new Caterpillar generator eight-hundred KW. Before our city discount, or I should say government price, not necessarily city discount, but government agreed price, the list price is three hundred and forty thousand, with the government pricing, it's two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The catch here is that if we ordered today the generator, it has to be manufactured, there are no eight-hundred KW generators available, it would have to go on the assembly line, and that's projected at seventy weeks, so calculate that into months and then figure out the rental, we would be paying more money renting the existing backup generator than the newly bought, so. Neither at the rebuild or the, I calculated rebuild cost, if we were to just rebuild the existing engine, we'd have a minimum of two hundred and sixty thousand into it. If we went brand-new, we'd have five hundred and eighty-six thousand. If we can successfully purchase this used one, we would have less than two hundred thousand into it, so it is quite far the most economical for the city. City Public Contracting Rule E dash fifteen, purchase of used personal property, adopted or ORS two-seven-nine-B point zero-eight-five allows the city to immediately procure used equipment without competitive bidding or procuring quotes if the purchase is unlikely to encourage favoritism or substantially diminished competition. The purchase must also either result in a cost savings to the city or the public, or otherwise promote the public interest in any manner that could not be realized by a formal competitive solicitation process. So here the city is in dire need of the generator for a critical public water system facility. No adequate new equipment is available at any cost for at least seventy weeks and likely longer. Repairing the existing failed generators costly and has no associated timeline, and staff has surveyed the market and learned that the used equipment will adequately replace the failed generator in a timely manner, and that it is sufficient cost savings to the city of at least a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The savings amount does not take into account rental costs, but potentially one point two million occurred. I, these were legal counsel's numbers, I think they're a little inflated, but the point is, is that they're way higher than purchasing used. For the above reasons, staff concludes that the city should take advantage of this unique opportunity to obtain the necessary equipment at a discount. Based upon staff's research, market survey, and inquiries, purchase of the available used generator would have no impact on the competition, nor show favoritism to any particular vendor. All the criteria in E fifteen has been met, allowing the city to, council to approve the used property purchase. So staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to sign the necessary agreement and associated documents to purchase the two thousand and two used Caterpillar generator from Generator Source of a hundred and seventy-five thousand plus the shipping estimate of seventy-five hundred, and a separate contract required to install, which is estimated at eighteen thousand. And legal counsel will review the finalized contract before the city manager's signature. And I'd share that the, in analyzing the wastewater reserve fund, the reserve fund has adequate resources to make this purchase and complete its commitments in this budget.
So, and I'm sorry, I may have fogged this out. Did you give an estimate of what you think it costs to have either our local cat folks or the Denver cat folks go and look at this plumber?
I was told that I have that information tomorrow morning, so I don't have it.
So should that be included in the motion?
Not necessarily the amount for that service, because that doesn't fit into the actual price of this, so it doesn't meet the needs to be in this motion. But it would be a criteria that, pending the successful review or evaluation of the equipment prior to signing the agreement, that hey, if it's satisfactory with those professionals looking at that oil analysis and the load test results and witnessing those, then, then we'd move forward, so.
Okay. So with that, Madam Mayor, I will move that pending review of this equipment, that the city council authorize the city manager to sign the necessary agreement and associated documents to purchase the two thousand and two used Caterpillar generator from Generator Source for a hundred and seventy-five thousand plus, shipping estimated at seventy-five hundred dollars, and any separate contract required for installation estimated at eighteen thousand, pending legal counsel review and approval.
Second.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think we have to do this, this seems to be the right path forward. My thoughts would go to what do we do with the existing equipment? I know we had some discussion on Friday. Do you know that there's three, there's three total generators that need to be used, my understanding? Do you know the kilowatt rating on the other two? Is this the largest of the three?
Mayor and Counselor Irvin, this is the largest generator, backup generator that we have. The generator at the water treatment plant is a six-hundred KW, and the generator here at City Hall is a hundred and fifty.
That works out perfectly. So I would be in favor of us actually going, potentially, if the numbers make sense, and having our existing one rebuilt as well, and having that as a backup generator or one that can be rented out or resold. And part of the thought process on that is, new ones are two hundred and sixty thousand ones with a seventy-week lead, and a rebuild's one to one forty-seven. Do we have any comparable? Well, a couple questions. How long were these other used ones that are not just fresh rebuilds? How long have they been on the market? The, like the one we're gonna look at, how long is it listed?
I'm not a hundred percent sure how long it's been on the market. It was shared with me by the Generator Source that they acquired this generator from San Antonio, it was, it powered a warehouse, and I learned today that it was a prescription drug manufacturer's warehouse, it was their backup generator. I'm assuming for cooling, making sure that their cooling systems were in place for, for that facility. Not a hundred percent sure why this, this specific generator is, was for sale, it could have been an upgrade, or it could have been, the facility was actually being decommissioned, and this was acquired through a purchase during the decommission of the entire facility, so I do not know how long it's been on. This is the only eight-hundred KW generator that I could find available in the, in my Google search, that was a Caterpillar. I was trying to match what we already had existing so that it would be an easier plug to play, plugins, you know, so all the wires are the right length and everything in the pad, and so it was comparable, we didn't have to make any additional site changes. That being said, there's many other manufacturers, but I still believe none of them have produced the cost savings to the city and the sense of urgency of getting this done as soon as we can.
And just thinking through it, you know, you've got less money to rebuild it than it is to buy a new one. The downside is lead time and the rental cost, it's seventeen thousand a month, you know, ten months, you just bought another used one. We were already down, we're not getting that money back. If we sit on this asset, if we have the capital right now, then it's something that can be power any one of the other locations, if they go down, if it can be mobilized, it can be an asset to other municipalities or to be rented out in other weather events or other things like that. Just, the only thing, it seems like if you don't have the capital to actually get that one rebuilt and the, and the used one, then you're out of luck. But if you do, you have all the advantage, and then you could resell it, presumably somewhere fairly close to new, without a warranty, certainly, you know, that, that there's probably no comparables exactly right now, because I'm assuming that there was no fresh rebuilds on, on the market, but it would bring more than a, you know, especially if there was a certified rebuild to cap or something, but that would, I think we're gonna need backups to things, and that goes into what some of our goals on resiliency planning, and it's a big, big issue, and we've been down a couple of times just in the last short period.
So, Mayor, I'd just like to address Counselor Irvin. I'll do some additional research. I was also told that the, you know, our disabled generator has some value, I'm trying to get an understanding of what that value is. I can see if we can get a little bit more additional information as to what it truly would be to rebuild it. And then Mr. Myers has recommended too that we might try to keep our eyes open, there's a lot of opportunities in the emergency management realm to apply for grant funding to replace our current generators. So I'd like to spend a little bit of time, if you don't mind, kind of looking at those options, and then I would be more than happy to report that back or send you information regarding that.
Did you do scrap it? I got dibs on the turbo.
Mr. Stewart, I had two questions. The, one was the, the vendor offers a satisfaction guarantee. According to the thing, what would that entail?
So when working with our legal counsel, she, Carrie, has taken their contract and rolled it into her contract, so now the, the work begins, what the satisfaction would be, would be for us to send these individuals, a professional, to essentially to their site, run the generator through its paces, get the oil samples that we've discussed before and after, so that we can determine that there's no internal issues with the engine and feel confident, and really get their expert advice that yeah, this is a good purchase or not. If it's not a good purchase, we just walk away. That's the satisfaction component of, of this that we'll get. There is no warranty, it's not like there's a thirty-day warranty or this or that. That's how we're gonna hopefully meet the satisfaction guarantee in our minds.
And then the second part was, is could some other municipality or company come in and say, we want it now and buy it right, right off the lot? Or do we have any agreement with the vendor?
Yeah, I suppose that's possible, cash generally talks, so, but I think in good faith that means they presented me with a, essentially a purchase contract, and that they know that this evening your, this heart council is reviewing this and hopefully potentially authorizing the purchase, that I think in good faith that we're working towards that purchase. I would be really disappointed if they chose to sell it to a vendor walking off the street or to somebody off the street today, or even tomorrow.
Thank you, public.
Thanks.
Anyone else? So, we have a motion in a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Now, the report from the city manager.
Just a reminder about the League of Cities, League of Oregon Cities, City Hall Day on the twenty-fifth, I have, Counselor Savage has already signed up, Counselor Mary Day is interested. Is anyone else interested in going as well? We'll get you signed up too, then, Counselor Fleck. Anyone else on January twenty-fifth? Friday I give you the schedules for the Youth Advisory Council staff, and to participate in that with us, the council member. So if there's any changes you need to make, let us know, or you can trade with somebody, just let us know so that we know who to call and remind and everything for that. Business cards, we are making new business cards for all of the city council members. We've made a change to the business cards, as listening to some council members, when they've gone to conferences and they wanted to write notes, or they're trying to get people to, their information. The business cards will have on the front of the business card, all of your information as a council member, and then on the back will be the city's address, so that there's, it's really clear who to contact and still leave room for writing on the back, because often at conferences you want to write something on the back of the card and give it to somebody. So we have those, and we'd kind of like you to, before we leave the meeting tonight, so after the executive session and we adjourn the regular meeting, if you would take a quick glance and make sure that everything's good on the cards, we're ready to go to print on those tomorrow, except for one. And so we'll, we'll take care of that and get those moving. We have the new iPads, they're sitting in my office, but we don't have the cases for them yet, and of course, the old cases do not fit on new iPads, some little changes here or there, and they are on their way, but they're not here yet, so we hope to have those before the next meeting. If you have an iPad now, if you would bring it back in and turn it in, so we can then get those old ones, we're gonna wipe them clean and probably use them somewhere else in the city for something that doesn't need the, the memory and everything for those. With the new council and everybody in place, I encourage you, please, we've asked before, we still haven't gotten it, so we're encouraging you, reminding, please get us your bio information. If you'd like to have a little biography on who you are and why you ran and what your grand mission and dream for the world is, or whatever you want to put in there, please get that to us and send it to me and Mindy, and we'll get that on the webpage.
Please get that to us and send it to me and Mindy, and we'll get that on the webpage for you. If, what I'm going to do also is we're going to work with somebody on staff who is a professional photographer, and we'll get her to come to one of the meetings and take professional headshots of each of you, and we'll let you know in advance which meeting that would be, so you can dress appropriately, how you want your professional headshot to look, and we'll get those on, on the web and get that squared away. But please, give us the bios, information about clubs, organizations, whatever that you want to put on there. Friday update, we talked about the childcare, and in the Friday update, we also recognize and put out information about the Cascade Org, the Cascade West HOG, and Glen Benton Community College is sponsoring some childcare workshops for beginners that want to do childcare in their homes. They're free, they're online. I'd encourage anybody who's interested to go and look at last week's Friday update, we had the flyer in there as well as the information. Give us a call too, and we'll get the information to you as well if anybody has interest in that desperately, something that's needed, and this would be great, it worked right in with the grant, because these are, these are workshops, get started, how to do it, and, and what you need to do to get certified, and then also what are the next steps, so the two workshops kind of go in together. Great opportunities, and I believe those were in February, but I'm not sure. Could you invite Peace Health, the Peace Health staff to that? That also came up in the meeting, that Peace Health is calling out for the needing childcare services. So we'll, we'll make sure they've seen that, then the flyer and everything then too. And if you'll give us a copy too of the grant stuff, then we'll add that to, that information. The applications for the city council position, as well as the budget committee, are on our city webpage. If you go to the main page and go down to jobs and volunteer at the bottom, you click on that and it'll list those there. So I wanted to make sure all of you know that and it's out for everyone else that might be interested, that's where those applications will be and be available. One last item, just want to express appreciation to Counselor Roberts and his, his work with, with us and with staff. We've enjoyed watching him grow. And it's, it was kind of interesting to hear him talk about, he didn't have high expectations for Counselor Savage and was surprised that she was appointed to the council. When you started on, we kind of felt, what in the world have we gotten ourselves into? You've done, it's been, it's been great getting to know you and, and watching you grow and develop and learn and, and everything. And as a result of that, our, our staff has put together a plaque for you. Certification out of it for you. This is made from original flooring from the Armory. Wow. From the nineteen thirty-one flooring. The Chief Michael Roberts, City Council, makes sure you have your service. Here's a certificate of interest. Just in case you're.
Yeah, I was a little, I will have to say, yeah. But the last thing about this council, you can make anybody good. Yeah, that was right, yeah.
That's fine with you. That was perfect. All right. Don't go anywhere yet.
So my question to you is, I said, I'm trying to conclude this meeting, should I say the executive session do or?
Yeah, because it's not concluded yet.
Good job.
You almost got it.
Yeah, that was.
Almost got it. No such law.
You could.
Business from the city attorney?
I'll give my report in executive session.
Okay. Items removed from Cassette Agenda. The City Council for Cottage Grove will now meet in executive session to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. The executive session is held pursuant to O R S one nine two dot six six zero two H, which allows the council to meet in executive session to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session.
And after the executive session, we will come back and there won't be any decision in the regular meeting and we'll adjourn the regular.
Mr. Myers, are we still broadcasting?
Yeah.
I'll just wait.